I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. First on our agenda is approve our minutes from last meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion by date, second by norm, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Next on the agenda is approve our lean's voucher. We'll move by, was that Tim? Second, Amy or Amy? Uh, any discussions? All in favor?
Hi.
Next is referrals, twenty four oh one Bedell. Is that you, sir?
Me.
So what do you got going?
Hey.
To come over here and I can move, Brad, you couldn't stand here.
Oh, no, sit down, sit down. That's okay.
Okay. The camera picks you up on the presentation because of viewers that way.
You're on this camera.
Yeah. What's your?
Here. Um, I'm planning to put a third storage building in my property at twenty four one Bedell Road. Um, it's gonna be exactly like the other two buildings that I have there. Um, just slightly different positions will have the obvious, have you seen the plans you have? See, you have. Yeah, so you got all that stuff, yeah. And um. Inside, same colors, same everything as the other buildings. And um, I think you get this, this morning I brought to um. Well, Frank was down to look at the property today. Uh, this morning I brought down the elevation changes for the um, for the property. But they wanted. And um. So I could.
Yeah, when you guys says, oh, like he dropped off to us an updated grade. We, the original plan lacked uh, for us sufficient information for grading, but the new one uh, addresses are always our typical concerns of, you know, great drainage to the neighbors, how it impacts. He's got a self-contained system addressing it, feeding into existing bitches and then back out the road. So we are good in an engineer and stand standpoint of what he's presenting to us.
Okay. Um, I applied for a, well, I already applied, didn't we get proof for a um. Um, a um. Variance extension on it or variance uh, for the property that is kind of close to the solar um, property there and the not, not that close, but you know, into the property next door. Um, which used to be for sale, if it's still for sale or not. Um. What else? Um, what else you need to know?
I'm gonna move over to Casey. Casey, you had sent us, Arlene had sent us your comments.
Right.
Anything you need to add?
No.
Okay, what about handicap parking that person? Do you have some type of designated handicap spot there?
Yep, uh, the one. Well, it's, there's no, I don't need.
This isn't, this is, this is storage, not.
Well, I don't need a handicap parking for this, for this building or additional parking spaces because it's storage.
Right.
Storage, I mean, there is, we have a handicap parking space in front of the main, in front of the main building, which is, yeah.
Here.
Um, yeah.
Two, two, this, the third, here's you. So, so that is, you have something in front of the, the cinder block or cement building, whatever it is out front.
Yes, yeah. I mean, some people that. We don't get a lot of handicap.
I know.
Some people just pull in front of the door, you know.
Okay. Um. Uh, here M one. So the new design and performance standards. How are we doing on landscaping? I seen the big giant pine tree. I was there today. You have a few bushes at this one easterly end in the front.
Right, yep.
It's everybody.
What are you looking for? I mean, um, this back, there's really no landscaping at all because the buildings are there.
Back in here, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
While, while you're adding this and we got you here and the site plan, we're trying to make sure everything's up to snuff.
Okay.
Anybody have any issues with his landscaping?
But it says no landscaping shown, but landscaping exists. It doesn't, doesn't really exist. There's, as you said, one pine tree.
There's a big, huge pine tree in the westerly side, like kinda here.
Yeah.
And a few little bushes across the front, Dave, I was there today in the.
Yeah, I was too. I didn't, I didn't see any bushes.
There was some right, right here on this corner.
I took.
Oh, I'm sorry, I drew the wrong. No, I'm right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the right way there. There's about four or five little green, something. Evergreens or something.
Took some pictures there last week.
I mean, the grasses, I always keep the grass cut. I have a long service, so it always looks neat.
So are the bushes on, on your property or on the residential piece along the?
Oh, they're on my property. There's, there's a hedge row between my property and, and the uh.
Okay.
Property next door, which is also M one, so, but it looks like a, you know, it's M one, I think, all the way to Grand Island Boulevard, I believe.
And I know there was an issue, if I'm not mistaken, about this one building with the solar thing that you got that straightened up. That all, that's all straightened out. Okay.
So are you, are you saying you have a variance to be within fifteen feet of that rear property line?
That's correct, yes. Um, if you wanna.
What did that, how did that come about?
ZBA, right? You want that as ZBA.
It was last September, actually.
So it was before the building was planned?
No.
Oh. So you've been with, before the ZBA with this, before you come to us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And then actually, if you, if you measure things out, I probably don't really need the variance, but it's coming close to the other property, you know, it was, I see what, thirty feet from the property line?
Yeah, the height of the building. Height of the building outside of property.
Okay.
So the height of the building would be this fifteen and this fifteens, if the building's fifteen. If the building's twenty, you're supposed to be twenty and twenty.
Or not from, not from the edge of the building.
Oh, twenty five.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's that, that resident.
Okay.
So, so it's supposed to be twenty five, but you got variance for fifteen.
So he's good to go there.
Yeah.
And why is this non-conforming? Is it why? Why is it illegal, non-conforming use?
Because it was, he started his business in ninety eight in our code to perfect um.
Two thousand and four?
What, what?
So the building's on the site. We're controlled, we're constructed pre-dating the current code, so there's, their status is legal non-conforming.
There's just a couple of things, like he has just a hair under the one point five acres and one lot. And a couple of other little things. Nothing major.
But adding this building, doesn't that require it to be conforming?
No, it doesn't decrease any other non-conformities.
Probably.
It can make a lot bigger, but adding the building on.
Probably if he was borrowing money, it might be an issue with the bank.
Well, if you've got a, a, a house on a, a lot that's too small and you add in addition to it. If it's a certain size. It has to become conforming.
Tim, we approved the other two in the last six years.
You know, it makes it more non-conforming than it currently is. But this doesn't, doesn't increase any of the non-conformities.
So now, when you say storage, you, you. I could store my car there. It's not, you're not like fixing cars in those, you're fixing cars in the front building.
No, that's right, but and then people store their car either over the, over the winter time, or they have some long-term storage, or people just. You know, some cars have been there for four or five years, you know, in one of the buildings, so.
So it's basically, he's just adding more storage. He's not adding more commercial car repair space.
There's no working area, no repairs at all in that building or any, anything going on, so.
Okay.
If I wanted to store an antique car or something, that.
Sure, yeah, you have no bolts or anything, just cars and trucks.
Get a lot of your.
I know.
Brad, the only uh, utility is gonna be um, power?
No.
Not even power?
Probably not power, no.
Oh. So you'll have no lighting on the outside of the building?
No, no lights on the outside of the building, no. I mean, there's a, I mean, have lights, the only lights inside the building is the skylight down the center, so you can, you know, but there's no interior lighting.
So I think what Norm's saying is I can't go there at nighttime and go access the building. I've gotta go through you.
That's true, yeah.
Right, I gotta.
No, 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 there's no people in it out like that, no.
So it's not like a storage.
It's not like a public storage thing, no.
So I know we've said this before, but I don't see, I didn't see any striping of parking spaces. And I always, we've always made, you know, I guess zoning's always made a point of, you can't count them if there aren't stripes. Is that something you could do?
Doesn't, wasn't the rule, he just needs eight, eight spaces, he needs ten.
Two bays, he needs eight spaces.
Yeah.
And it, it was, it's original plan showed.
But they were never striped off, right?
Well, they might have, but that was a long time.
Okay.
It was a plastics factory, that was virtually built.
Yeah. So could we get the striping back?
Yeah. Maybe, I don't know, I, I have to um.
I mean, we've been, we've been very consistent with other, you know, applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
Stripe so that zoning can count and everything's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have it um, the driveway resealed soon. I have to patch some holes in it and then.
Well, after it's sealed.
Yeah.
Wouldn't want to do it before.
Yeah, oh, no, no, that'd be crazy.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Motion from anyone?
I'm calling over the week, approve the site plan as is.
What about the striping?
Well, include, and then the striping be done after he does the rooftop.
Second.
Motion by Frank, second by Norm, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
You're all set, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Went by, looks, your place looks real nice, by the way. It's nice and clean and I was there today.
First started there that had no junk cars along the back or the side or anything and, you know.
Yes, you do maintain, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the revision for the LWRP. Come on, Dan, in the hot seat.
Oh, now you're.
No, no, I want you right here, now the Brad's.
All right.
Yeah, if you could just give us a little summary so we know what's going on here.
Okay, so the, as you guys know, the, the Long Range Board has been working on the LWRP now for about.
It's almost like, could you just? Not in a.
Um, it's almost been four years now, so um, it's been going back and forth between the state and with the town and attorneys and engineering and revisions and making sure that um codes match up and um, everything, I guess, is tip-top in there. And it's finally gotten its approval from the state and it's come back to the town to approve it. Um, within the document, what they're asking from, from this board is to adopt those zoning amendments in there. There's some properties in there where they've kind of adjusted the um, property lines. All those properties that you saw in there are all town and um, let's see, towns, there might be a state one in there, I'm not sure. There, there are no private properties, they're all government properties.
So they're, they're like um, land conservancy property.
That's right.
They're, they're not for profits. And they, they actually have to be zone open base, that's okay.
Yes.
So I think all the property in the town and the survey property, even we, we, does gain its open space. There is no private owned lots in there, not rezoning somebody's property, it's, it's open space lots that are being.
Yeah, the only one we got rid was the state parks. The state park designation on their lands.
Yeah, so there's a map in there with um, hash marks and it shows you where the hash marks are within the map as to the smaller spots that they kind of added in. They're all pretty much upon something that was already there, just again, moving the, the lines and making what they should be.
If, were you gonna get any pushback from any of those entities?
Um, Bob could tell you more on that than I could.
I have not.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything at all.
And this, they seem logical to me.
Yeah, that's right. Their, their use matches the zoning going to open space, yeah, so.
As a sidebar, that would have really tricked my heartless, taking people's property other than the town's property and rezoning it without it being a problem, because you just can't go throw in somebody's property without getting that figured out, you know, but this is, we've got to legally.
So is that a, a notification process to the land conservancy and state?
We have, and we have been verbally in touch with them and processed it as we've been going through this.
And then the second part that they were asking for is to look at for the consistency law. So that's basically putting in the processes in order to see what properties, when they come in, as to what would fall into the LWRP. And um, there's a checklist, kind of like some other checklists you've seen within the town that you go through um, and have to see if it falls into that. Um, and then if it does, that means it's part of the LWRP projects that are within there, within the shoreline. It could be the creeks too. And um, if they get flagged, that means they will then go into um, the zoning. I believe zoning office and um, all the guidelines that are in there, there's like forty five, forty-four policies within it. Um. That it'll go through there and they'll double check and cross-reference or however they would do that. But that's, you'll see the checklist that's in there. Um. Where the zoning board would go through that. So basically, it's just a, it's a, a measure that we really didn't have to help protect the shoreline and make sure those things are, you know. Um, it's more of a protection thing and proper planning. And the other big thing that the Long Range was really looking at was that it's gonna give us some more access to our creeks that we really have a problem with, so we'll have um, more designation and be able to go in and, and, and do a little bit more. I couldn't tell you details, Bob could tell you, but it'll give us as a town more leeway or whoever to go for government, go in and, and work on those things.
So we have access and also opens up a lot of avenues for funding.
That too, yeah.
For creek maintenance and, and all the other stuff, which are a big part of it, in the month, you know.
Jen, I was reading through this and unfortunately, every other page of ours was missing.
Yeah, I saw that too.
So it missed a lot, but I was kind of surprised that some of these, like policy number twenty nine. The development offshore uses and resources, including renewable energy sources, shall accommodate New York's longer standing. I mean, how is that of importance to Grand Island?
It is a boilerplate process, believe, for review, put forth by the state for its objectives.
So do we have to adapt the boilerplate as such?
Yes.
I mean. To me, this doesn't have any bearing on Grand Island.
I, I honestly couldn't say a lot, give you a lot of feedback on that. I really wouldn't, yeah.
I mean, it's essentially, yeah, it's the consistency of documents for the communities that have LWRP, but it falls within the state guidelines. That's why a lot of the stuff we go, here, well, it applies elsewhere within the state and communities with LWRP.
So more like a blanket type.
Yeah. It could boil, yeah.
And you guys didn't have the whole thing and, and there's a lot there, I know, to look at. I mean, I've been looking at this for two years myself now and I'm still trying to wrap my head, but I think it's chapter four in there, if you go to it. Um, you, you didn't get it in your print. It's another, there's like four other sections that are part of this whole plan. But that tells you all the projects and everything that's been kind of flagged and some projections as to um, what the town is not sensitive to, but um, things that would specifically be flagged and giving a little direction as to what we have in mind.
What, I mean, what does this do for us that our existing laws and zoning regulations does, don't?
I think if I'm not mistaken, one of the things is, is if there's a, a creek outlet to the river and they're gonna come and clean that, they only have to do so many feet.
Who's they?
Let's say the DEC comes in to clean a little piece of the creek out, where this document might give us more, now, correct me if I'm wrong, someone to say that you gotta go in farther. You can't just clean the front, you gotta clean the in five hundred feet or a thousand feet.
Where does that say this?
Well, it's.
It's, it's more, it's, it's basically, I mean, honestly, this program is more about having policies and actions in place that continue, as it's a local waterfront revitalization plan, it's maintaining what we have that's access to the public. Development schemes that don't impact access to water. Essentially, a global vision on being able to not continually lose control or allow other projects that negatively impact that philosophy of public access to the water, public enjoyment of the water. That's really what the LWRP is about. It's, 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 you know, maintaining that consistency of being able to provide that to within the community.
I guess.
If that makes sense.
It doesn't seem to do a lot for me. It's one of those feel-good type things that, you know, is another hunk of paper that people have to go through when they're doing developments. And I don't know if our existing codes don't take care of everything.
What development would I need to have the LWRP?
I can't go deep into it, but it's just another checklist or review of being able to assure state policy, government policy.
If I was building a marina or something, if I'm building inland, it's I'm not on the shoreline.
I think it also gives us a, a, a little bit more. If anything, it gives us more of a little bit of a, um, I mean, we're often lead agencies and projects, but I think it gives us a little more ability to add what we want to see and what we want to do there, where it's not, we know, like, you know, the shoreline with the coronation engineers and this and that and whatnot, all the agencies. But it, it gives um, some kind of an idea or a map. We have something there saying what we were looking for there and with the town and we have a plan, so it gives us kind of a for lack of better terms, a soapbox to stand on if we need one.
I, I had a question about this. Maybe there's a larger one, but the colors kind of don't agree with the, the legend. The legend doesn't have, I don't know if that's what we're trying to do here, but doesn't have the central business district even look.
I mean, the central business, it's literally about parcels that are in.
Well, it doesn't show it, the central or the uh. There, there's no color for it, for the central business.
Yeah, but.
In the north one, you can't tell.
It's not a zoning map, it is the parcels that are under jurisdiction of the LWRP. That's what the map is.
Central business would be a parcel, it's not a creek that's running through central businesses, there might be, but not necessarily. Remember where they were talking, remember where they were talking about adding on to the Elderwood and there was a creek there? This, this document might have something to do with them.
I was just thinking that if this map is in here, maybe it doesn't need to be in here, it ought to be more accurate. And some of the colors, you can't tell. Otherwise, take the map out.
Yeah, I understand what you're, it's kind of hard to say, Frank, I, I understand that.
Otherwise, it should be labeled, you know, zoned.
But I think it was just something that.
As a guide or something?
A guide, yeah, to see that exactly what the parcels, when you look at the actual, where these are is to, to give you an idea as to the location, as to where these were.
And so, you know, some of them are crosshatched and it doesn't explain.
The crosshatching is the properties that we're looking to um, redesignate those.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I'm not real keen on the.
And does this tie together with the Open Space Committee and with their?
Um.
It's a cousin.
Okay.
It's once removed. But yeah.
Got it.
It's another of the seven moving projects, yeah.
What other towns or villages have adopted a LWRP in our area? Any?
They'd have to be along the water.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of somebody I haven't.
Like Scher, Hamburg, uh.
Yes, they all have, yeah.
Well, I mean, you think they have or?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yes.
If this is, yeah.
Our last one was ever fully adopted.
We've, we've had one for, you know, a, a very long time. We have done updates to it or attempted updates to it for decades. There's been one in place and this is updates to one that's currently in place. This isn't, hey, we're just suddenly creating this brand-new document. This is updates to an existing one that's been in place for decades.
It is fairly prescriptive, particularly for construct, construction along the waterfront, you know, I mean, the, the the size of the piles, the spacing, connections, the size of the wood members. I mean, whoever's gonna build on the waterfront better have access to this document.
Well, is it resi- residents as well as commercial?
I would assume.
Yeah, it says.
Oh, come on, really? For people who want to put a dock in?
Yeah, residential structures.
There might be some.
Elevation and construction, I mean, it's.
I don't think you're gonna build a boathouse on the water anymore.
Yeah.
Pileings, I mean, that's out, so.
But in the past, I mean, I put a dock in the last ten years, went to the town and got a building permit, never heard anything about LWRP.
Well, you will now.
Well, yeah. He says we've had one in place.
Because Norm, basically, the, the town doesn't issue building permits for docks and the federal government does, and yet they would do things, whether it was in compliance with the town, it's making those agencies work together in their decision process also.
The town came out and inspected the dock.
Well, when I did mine. I had to go through three agencies, I believe, DEC, decor engineers and something.
Depends how long it's gonna be.
The hot.
The town literally doesn't regulate docks.
And then once I got those three okays, then I came down here and got a building permit. But I couldn't get a building permit without those three okays.
Interesting.
Once you're within a.
The marine just took care of it.
The core.
He does all the paperwork.
In, right? Like we've had fences.
That's why you don't see it, if he looks at this.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
This is very prescriptive.
I don't think this fifty-seven applied to a dock, it's more like a building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the town does issue billing permits for docks, but we just make sure it meets state code.
I mean, it talks about piles, piles driven, how they're driven. I don't know.
I think a lot, a lot of this, I mean, this is just me speaking, but just like looking at some of the shoreline stuff that has been done around. Um, you know, you've seen all the, I don't, the restoration projects that have been around. One of those projects, we kind of looked at and, and was reviewing and a lot of these things like Dave's saying. I mean. They get a book and it's the amount of guidelines and what's already there is way beyond anything that we have sitting in, in this. I think this is just more to give us more of um say, really, a guidance and protection.
No, I did my own doc application. I didn't use Buffalo Wall. I used, I remember Henry from.
Yeah.
I did my own, I, I, it had to be an inch thick of paperwork.
Okay.
So I had to jump through a lot of hoops.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think this is making it more restrictive, like we're adding more laws and we're adding more hoops to go through and whatnot. I think this, that most of this is already in place. It's just a document within, that we can use as a working document to look at and, and work those projects upon what we want to see as a town. Not the, so much, we already have much followed this law and code there. It's just making sure it's more or less in one spot and it gives us a roadmap, I think, that Wells.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
And I am no expert on this. I will tell you, Paul Lechner, um, who really was really struck, took a stronghold of this, yeah, and he had been work on this.
I think he was retired from the.
Yeah, he's retired core.
He's retired core.
He was a stickler.
Yeah.
I mean, I, he wouldn't mind if I said that, because this really was a project for him.
Yeah.
So he was really the brains of you know, direction on this with us, along with the.
Part, lady, huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
But in my, in our board, you could speak better than I could.
In our current version of the LWRP, do we have those kind of guidelines about the size of pilings and spacing of pilings?
Do we have?
Somebody just said we did.
I could not tell you, and it, we've not referenced it.
I don't think I've ever seen it. Well, is it on the, is it on the website?
I'll ask, do you think this makes it more restrictive, Bob? Do you think, I mean, this makes more paperwork in the town? Yeah, probably, because you guys gotta stop and I know.
Does, as a. Review.
Review.
Does it comply with?
Review, yeah.
I mean, if I'm speaking, please.
But it has a benefit to us, right? Or somebody.
It gives us a stronger safe table, both with other agencies and with developers.
Yep.
Into meeting the island's objectives, which we're crafting or putting there.
Just to put an arbitrary example out there, if New York State Parks wanted to build a two hundred two hundred unit uh, campground in Peabody Island. We would really have nothing to say about it, because it's their, like, property, state property, all that stuff. But with this being that it's on our, our ground, would, would give us a seat at the table as far as the secret and all that, how that would work out. And we can, we could actually have a opinion, if you will, where, where we wouldn't normally have that.
Yeah.
So it kind of gives us a, a foot in the door on things like that, so we can, we can at least keep ourselves, you know, and, and, and speak up and say, you know what? That's great, but we don't know how we're gonna get the sewer out of here and that's, you know, whatever, we, but it gives us That's great, but we don't know how we're gonna get the sewer out of here and that's, you know, whatever. We, but it gives us an opportunity to say that instead of saying, we're building this bigger now, you know, so.
Yeah, one of the things we might want to do is require any engineer that's working on waterfront property to certify that he or she has complied with the Grand Island LWRP. And then I'll at least alert them to the fact that there is one and they'll go through it and.
A sign-off sheet that you wrote?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
So would that be a separate sign-off sheet or could that be added to the site plan sheet? Are we on two different animals?
Well, kind of on two, you know, I understand what he's trying to say.
It's a subset. If the parcel's there, it's a subset then, and it branches into that.
He basically wants the engineer or the architect to acknowledge that there is an LWRP and that he has followed it.
Yeah.
He or she has read it and followed.
And, and if I were that person, I'd say, well, I better get a copy of it and.
Right, make sure that I'm playing ball.
Look through it, yeah.
You're talking about this checklist?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, or in the whole LWRP document, where it talks about.
Okay, but this would reference the LWRP checklist.
Yes, yeah.
So is, do we wanna make that part of, do we have to like? Do we want to make that part of a motion to approve? That we add it to our checklist so that we know that it's been done? Not that we're overseeing it, just that it's in our checklist? No? Does that make sense or no? You know, how the design and performance standards are kind of at the end of our checklist, but no, it's not, uh, at that point when that was done, it was just a guideline.
For waterfront property impacted by the LWRP that they complied with it.
Yeah.
Is that's, would that be sound okay to you, Casey? Cause that's gonna end up in building.
Yes.
Okay, I would think it would help, Casey and Bob.
I think, um, yeah, I would say we should word it towards the applicability, which seems to me to read areas of special flood hazard, which are defined as FEMA. Um. Areas of special flood hazard identified by FEMA and there's definition of that and there's, and they're, they're mapping. Is that the only thing it applies for?
Any of the coastal and so many islands from the coastal boundary, the LWRP addresses.
So if.
So this applicability, I'm reading that here, the applicability is, only talks about, uh, this FEMA map flood plains. So that'll, that'll include, that'll include waterfront, but it'll also include
upstream corridor.
Upstream creek.
Yeah.
Corridors as well, so it's not, I guess you could call that waterfront, but just plain waterfront could be misconstrued as being on the river. So, but in the flood hazard areas only go, it may not go the entire waterfront property.
If we put it on our checklist, on the back of our checklist and say, you know, have you complied to the LWRP and it would be, they'd have to check it and then when, who does that document? Bob, does that go to building and then go to you for?
Yes, I, I don't know where the final draft put the assignment of who does what.
Okay.
Says code enforcement.
Yeah, within the document.
So if we just put it on our checklist to have, you know, have you, you know, put the LWRP on our checklist.
Just for thirty, there's a society requirement, isn't it? To a point?
I didn't see.
I mean, I don't think it's for every year.
It's not for everyone, okay, there is, there is a, um, yes, in here. I could tell you offhand.
Wasn't apparent.
It, it would not be pages we don't have.
No, it's true too. It could be.
I don't remember, it was a qualifying page.
But Dave's right about the requirements for the building. It's amazing.
Yeah, the exterior wall connections.
Yeah, my guess is that those
Thirty seconds.
Observation platforms they put down along East River there and scenic woods does not meet this.
So you're right.
So like, here's our checklist. So on the last page, we've got additional considerations. So we could just list it, just like we listed this in another box.
Yeah.
And then they would just check that box and then the.
Yeah, I agree.
Enforcement, engineering would do their thing.
So, yeah.
I don't disagree with the checklist. I was just talking about the language that puts in the checkbooks. You have to just figure it out and.
I would just, I would just reference the document.
It could be in the front page there too.
It's a property.
It's them.
Yep, yep.
It could be referenced on that front page as well. Applicants should also consult. It should be listed as their LWRP.
So add it, so add it to our checklist application.
Yeah.
Done.
We've won, uh, put a box at the last page.
Okay, so who we approve with the understanding that the LWRP will be added to the checklist?
Yeah.
Under, under additional considerations, correct?
Yes, yeah, yes, I'm good.
Well, it should be added in several places.
Right, but I mean, the head, the main heading would be back there and however they add it to the front sheet, that's, I'm sure. I don't know who does that. Is that something you do, Arlene, or?
I think I have that file.
Yeah, cause you guys were involved in this recently.
I should share it with somebody. I shouldn't be the only one who has that. Well, it's on the website.
The power really don't have it.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
You shouldn't do that, right?
Okay, so we made a motion to, motion. Second by anyone?
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Are you a no, Norm? You're a no. Norm's a no.
Yeah. Too much obviously.
And so it passed. All right, communications. Has he been filed? No reason to talk about the thing, that's because we just did the.
Yep.
So that's some unfinished business. Well, there's a long road still plugging away over there with you, Bob?
Me, but yes, it's a plug.
Plugging away, okay, so we'll leave them as unfinished business. And what about eighteen twenty-one Whitehaven?
Thing from that, once we get some to the field or so.
And Arlene, we had sent them a letter, correct? Okay, do we want to remove them from the?
I would say take all, yeah, every.
All right, uh, do we need to make that a motion?
Yes.
Motion to remove eighteen twenty-one Whitehaven under unfinished business? Motion, anyone?
Motion.
By Norm, second.
I'll second.
Second by Frank. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and motion to overturn. Tim, Tim, and second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.